Committee meeting. I'm the Chair Sean Murphy and also in attendance tonight is Doug Hanum, Brian McCann and Lyntas Dowall, all members of the committee. And then also present are Mayor Mark Frye, Mary Westfall, Patrick Richardson, Leslie Bryning, Laura Smith, Joe Shaw, Bill Sanford, and we have nobody out in the gallery. Tonight, we're going to be hearing from Joe Shaw talking about the possibility of the introduction of a new green yard waste truck and a program that would be around that.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Appreciate it. Yeah, so today's, today's focus is to kind of bring to surface what was brought to the Finance Committee back in September-ish. It actually would have been October when we met. But our Parks and Forestry Department last year had requested a new green yard waste vehicle. Kind of came towards the end of the budgeting process for us. Wasn't super comfortable moving forward with it at the time, elected not included in the budget. And to do a lot of homework, which is what we've done for probably the last eight months or so on this. So the goal was to kind of give you an update on all the homework that we've done. Kind of share with you what some of our thoughts are and some of the things that we've looked at. Not asking for any actions, just to kind of give you a full update ahead of the budget cycle, kind of what you're looking at. So in front of you is a packet. How many people use our green yard waste program currently? So it looks like everybody but, but, but Mr. Murphy. So you guys are very familiar with what we do, right? We use bags and have cans and our truck is a rear yard, kind of a rear load type vehicle. We have two people that run the operation, one that drives, one that collects the material and throws it in the back. They may switch, switch out as the day goes, as you get tired and things. But that's our current operation. Bags can be bought at Sodders, at Krogers, in your utilities office, but primarily pretty much things go either in your can or in a, in a brown bag. So that's what we do. We buy, you can buy stickers in our utilities office and it's prorated throughout the year. If you buy earlier in the year, you pay a little bit more, but you get the service for longer. And then as you kind of march down through the months, the fee goes down, but your service gets a little bit shorter as well. So that's our current operation. So what we decided to do was take a pause and look and say, from the vehicle perspective, a rear yard loader was what was requested, but how would that operation look as a single man operation? Basically, taking one person out of the truck, putting them back in the fleet, doing Parks and Forestry other type things, and making it a single person operation. So a really good example is your current refuse and recycling collection. You have a much bigger vehicle, but that, that material gets loaded into the front and then it's lifted up and over and all of that is automated through a toter. Okay? City of Perrysburg uses this model. Theirs is fully privatized, but they use the model currently that, that we're going to look at here. So I'm going to go through a couple of things. I'm not asking you. General idea for what the rear yard truck looks like. Has a hatch that opens up from the back. The front loader looks like this, so it has two big arms on the front. The front of it is missing there, but what you do is you put what's called a carotin on the front of it, attaches to the arms. So what happens is this arm comes out, literally grabs the toter, throws it into the can up front. And then the bigger thing, what it needs to be empty, puts it up over the top of the vehicle. The nuts and bolts of what the trucks look like. So here's the homework sheet, right? We came up with three operations. Option three is what we do now. Let's just make a couple of changes. Buy a new truck. Our existing truck is fifteen years old, going on sixteen, starting in twenty twenty. We were able to get a partial period for a couple of cases, got fifteen years old. Right across the board, option three is a two man operation. That's the truck we talked about, literally a same replacement. Purchase price is about two hundred eighty-two thousand dollars for that vehicle. Purchase prices for the toter, going to this, right, this is using bags and cans. That's our annualized cost to buy bags. That's from our provider that we get in front. That's about three hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars a year to buy our brown paper bags. Right? Those are ones that are available at Ace from our utilities office. And then these are our labor rates. I'll go over the hours in a minute, but that's our current public service. So if we go to the single man operation, we throw it down into two options. Option one would be that new truck with the lift over the top, but we're going to provide the toter. The city's going to provide that, that collection piece, the system that everybody's on the yard or on the side. The other way is the resident goes out, buys their, whatever they do. So in Perrysburg's operation, they knew option two, they go out and we can get whatever can at Home Depot or Lowe's or whatever. And then go, go that way. So there's our new vehicle. You can see the difference in the price. It's almost four hundred ninety thousand. For the ones that are bigger vehicle, it's more expensive, but the carotin, everything goes with it, it's more expensive. With each one of these, we have toters, right? So in option one, because we're providing the toter, you've got some cost information there. So the truck vendor that we've been working with gave us the cost of providing toters and they can give us a much more economical price to provide. So if you go to Home Depot or Lowe's, you might pay a hundred and twenty-five for a ninety-six gallon toter, which would be your full size. Refuse and recycling toter. Or you get a smaller one, which is the sixty quart gallon one. So you go there, those are about a hundred bucks at Home Depot or Lowe's. But if you buy them for a vendor, those are your unit prices for the toter, so about half the cost. So no bags, we're moving away from that in this operation. And then your labor rates are the same. So the hours will go over with some of the additional information that we collect. So back with the trash leaders here, starting in June through July this year, using our GAS mapping system. Every place that we collected a green yard waste can, we snap the picture of, of that appointment of that and it's all in that. So when we did that, that's what it kind of looked like. It's, it's, I'm not asking you to look at the names of the streets or anything like that, but you've got orange dots all over the map. So that was every point from June and July that we actually stopped at a resident in Slovenia and said, okay, you're, you've obviously participated in our program at least once during the period. So thirdly, that total, if I go back a sheet, was one thousand eight hundred seventy. So this gives you an idea, we have six thousand twenty-eight refuse and recycling customers on the residential side. Eighteen, about eighteen hundred use our green yard waste program. A lot, a lot less than. Eighteen cents.
How many, how many?
So that would have been individual.
Okay, those are individual recycle, green yard. How many regular waste stocks do we have? So less than a third.
Which honestly surprised me with that even. I was, I thought more we participated in the green yard waste program than actually did. That was a seven week snapshot. So we, seven weeks, that's why they cut, that's basically three complete rounds. So we had a very wet June. I would imagine anybody who wanted to participate in the program. Back in twenty twenty-four, before we even started all this, I asked Marty to put together all of the hours that the man crew uses in the operation. So we spent eighteen hundred hours total in that. Five hundred sixty-five March, May, really a similar amount, June through August. A little bit less, but still a pretty good amount in September. It'll never, it's a significant drop off once you get into a hundred months. So that's the total number of hours. So in the double man operation, that number stays hot. As we go up into the single man, you say, why isn't it chopped and capped? The reason it's not chopped and capped is because for four weeks out of that year, we do unlimited green yard waste collection. And that is no matter what, it's your operation. So there's only a few more hours that go into that, that collection, no matter what happens. So that's kind of the, the data. Let's look at how the numbers end up. So I'm not asking you to go back where we were at, just to look at how many times we've been here, been in here, people, awesome. But all of this, if you look at options one, two, and three, and I wanted to see, but the pretty fact is moving on the vehicle hours, how long would it take, what we think, because of those additional labor that we're paying for the two man? How long would we be able to catch up with the additional pieces of hours? So option, let's start with option three, which is all the way down to the bottom, right? So we've got a two hundred eighty-two thousand dollar truck. We're not buying any toters, our bags, that's what we looked at on the previous sheet. So we've got our total capital cost of three nineteen eighty-six. And our labor rates are down there based on what was on the whole sheet. So using our existing operation, buying the new truck, it's going to cost us about four hundred seventeen thousand dollars to run. If we use the other vehicle. So what about option one, where we provide a toter? So we'll, we'll just take a quick pause here. It's just, why is it important we can provide a toter or the resident's? So everyone had online discussions about which one we think would be better for us if we went with either option one or two. What we worried about was if a resident, let's say, this is best all those advisor can and at Home Depot, our value is how, for whatever reason, the equipment and our functions, we crush it, we break a lid, we do whatever, right? So the resident's going to say, hey, you broke my can. I've got to provide you one anyway, right? So how much it is, do I get a receipt from them or am I reimbursing it? It gets, it gets ugly quick. So for us, with us, we're proud of the toter. I think there's a little more say in us and the quality of the toter that we get. We're responsible for it. If we break it, we got one toter, we pull out the show, we give you, we want, we break it. So that kind of the difference would be why we look at one toter. Slightly to me, towards us providing it because we have more control. But we'll go back to twenty twenty-six as a single man. We'll do the option one, our truck, that cost is there, the truck by sheet. Toters, that's for us to buy those toters, that's what we're looking for for the operation, that's the city provided. And the bags go away if we're not using them anymore. So our labor is there. It works out to about six hundred forty-four thousand dollars for us to do option one in a year. Option two is the same thing. It's really the same analysis for option one, except the resident's not providing the toter, so that line is out. And if you do that, that's five hundred fifty-five. So if you can, with us providing the toter, that would be both expensive options you'd get, right? So if we march out in twenty twenty-seven, here's the whole million dollars. So in twenty twenty-seven, we're still cheaper to do the double man route. We get to twenty twenty-eight, these numbers start to really close in on each other between option one and option three. Option one is still up a little bit, and then we get to the fourth year of the operation. And that's where option two is more cost effective than option three. Okay? Then advance it out one more year, twenty thirty, that's when option one becomes more cost effective than option three. So when you're looking at, if you're in option two, it's about a four year payback. You start to realize the capital costs that you're expending upfront and then march it out to five. It's a five year payback to do the opposite. And then for every year after that, those numbers continue to diverge as they get further and further away. As you might imagine, as you might imagine, because the labor starts to compound over time, right? So if you go all the way out to twenty forty, for example, the single man, they provide an operation of a positive eight and a half dollars. To do the double man, it's two point three. So that person that we can use that labor with, instead of putting them in the green yard waste all the time doing this, we can extract that resource out and put them into the Parks and Forestry program doing, you know, a patient that's coming up downtown, that's coming up on US twenty-three, that's going to be in the second block. It's just a reallocation of resources. So we're not, we're not suggesting we're losing a body. We're reallocating them for the way this place is going to change in the next couple of years. I would like to try to do that myself and use our own internal resources without hiring an additional body. I think this approach gives us the ability to do that, to at least try it, to do it our own by changing this operation.
Is option one, how many toters are we buying?
Option one, we are buying. Eighteen twenty-one dollars.
Okay, so if you're going to buy, you're going to buy a truck. You're going to chart, you're going to charge people on the screen there?
So that's in the revenue side, which we're still working through. But what we would do is, is honestly, the way we've looked at so far, it's very similar to cost. Right now, under the very January end, when you're buying your sticker, you're paying forty dollars. We're probably going to be really still. So the net cost, as people see, you might see a slight increase because obviously if I tried to give this to people, you could increase it a little bit more. But other than us providing the toter and then maybe getting a little bit more on the annual cost, probably like this. Other than you have additional toter, you store a lot of them. And that's true. It's a number of the three. If you have two now, that would be three. I'm not going to, I'm not going to sure to go back. You have a hard place to put it, whether it's on the side of the house or the back.
Have you experienced any issues with the current toters that the city provides?
No. When they get damaged or a lid gets broke, they notify and say, hey, my lid's cracked or whatever. We've got them in stock and they go right out into the fleet. So not, not an issue.
Follow up question is that, so do you have a perspective on how many times a year that happens?
I've never, I've never asked for a count on that. It's not too, it's not as many as you. I know I had the same once where I live. I've been there since two thousand fourteen, so I'm on eleven years living there. I've had my, one of my containers used once because of the lid. We would need to keep a small inventory of toters, obviously, if one race pulled one out. But like I said, I'm not looking for any decision points. Really, this was about truck purchase. But to show you what we're looking at and how this could be beneficial to the program, we wanted to get in front of you and at least show the information, show the homework we've done, look at the operation. It's a lot for you guys to think about as well, because that's a difference. And when we, when we switch to toters for refuse and recycling, it's a big effort, you know, bringing, bringing them in and delivering them and starting it. You hear some of the complaints, where am I supposed to put these and stuff? So there, there is a learning curve that goes with it, but you know, our community has at least been through it once.
How many bags do we sell here?
We buy a few bags once a year. So if you're thirty, thirty-seven thousand dollars, thirty-seven eighty thousand dollars, you're serving six thousand bags. Come with that point.
So we've got thirty-six thousand one-time users. But I mean, you have people who don't pay the annual fee. Buy bags. I assume those are the ones buying the bags. Do we know how many people buy bags?
We just know that it's.
If we eliminate those bags.
So those people's pickups.
Those people, those people either, they're either out or they got to sign up for the program.
We want everything as much as possible, not as much as possible. We would want everything in those toters put in there.
What kind of warranties typically on these type of machines? What kind of warranties are normally or for parts, things of that nature?
These guys usually have like one year and maybe five year limited, almost like your vehicle, like you would buy like a truck or something from.
And normally a, a piece of equipment this size, are we, are we paying this full amount? Year one, are we financing it over?
You pay the full amount. It would be like a four oh one capital item in the budget. Just like we would, uh, just like we would a truck or pickup truck.
Cause I was just thinking that if, and again, I don't know what the policy is for financing or not financing things. But that said, I mean, you're looking at instead of a couple hundred thousand dollar gap in the first year, you're only looking at sixty thousand dollar gap in the first year of get, to get there, you know? What about lead time on toters, do you know generally?
What we would do is if this was the, the route we decided to go to, we'd put the order in. It would all be logistics management. I, we've been talking internally if this was something we could roll out or if we would have somebody professionally do it. We're kind of leaning towards we can roll it out because the numbers aren't as big as we thought it was. So it's probably something that we could manage, but where those come in, where we store them, how we deliver them, those are things we would still look at.
I, I do appreciate that with this one, there's a consistency of experience of sort of, if you want to have the city take something away, you get a toter and you follow the calendar and it's a very similar setup, except for the fact that there's an additional cost that's an annual. So it's nice that you can opt into it. It is a little tough for someone who might only do a bag or two a year to have to switch over to the annual one. But I, I think I would probably, like, not that we have to make any decisions, but I'm leaning towards, I like the one where it's the single man city provided toter because of the consistency of it. I like that over time, we have more man hours that are available. I like that the city has less potential headaches happening from the different types of toters in it. I also appreciate that even just as you go through the city on green waste days, you're going to have a consistency of the toters you're seeing around as opposed to a bunch of different things and a lot of different shapes. So I appreciate the information that you pulled together for it.
Here we're thinking it would kind of look like your license when you go to get your license plates registered. You may have a green sticker one year, you may have a red sticker and an orange. That's how our driver would know with your can sitting out there, whether you were paid for that year or not. We're, we're collecting green this year. If you've got the red sticker from before, pass by and go until you buy your, buy your correct sticker. What's that?
Do green yard. As opposed to having a separate charge. We buy more, you end up buying more toters. I'd like to know the cost of that. I'd like to know what it would cost us to do green yard waste across the board for everybody. Build that cost into the, uh, into the monthly charge that people pay.
Like your refuse and recycle, just like the charge right on your bill, just like that?
Or just a single charge, refuse and recycling, and it includes green yard waste in our green yard waste container. I'd like to know what that would cost, what that would cost our residents, what kind of increase would see.
I think initially when we were looking at this, we, we thought more would participate in the program than actually surfaced. So if you would, I mean, under that, send up, you'd have two thirds of the residents that are participating in the program that are now going to have a charge up on their bill. I think that's why initially we were thinking that way.
I'm thinking it'd be pretty small charge though, across.
So there, there's currently, there's a drop off option, right?
You can, yeah, yeah. I, I believe you can take it to A and J. I don't know if you could take a truckload. I, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know that.
It costs money.
That's what I was going to ask.
They, they charge a.
Yeah.
So there's, okay, yeah.
And then Joe, just to clarify, on those unlimited yard waste days, when there's tree branches, things of that nature, that would just be the way it's now, that they throw it on the curb and somebody would hand load it.
No change, like, obviously.
So if they didn't have a toter, that service would still be.
Yeah, I mean, obviously we want to see as much into the toter as we can, but like, just like it does now, there's more out there than we, we would normally collect. It'd be a two person, we'd bring two people out, we would, we would service it.
Without a toter, just on those things.
So in my neighborhood, our neighborhood, we can have up to ten bags a house. And that's on a regular basis. Have you clocked that? Have you?
That's a, that's a lot, right?
Well, but it happens. I mean, spring and fall outside of unlimited, that's what's happening week to week is that they're putting a lot of bags out there.
So I mean, at two dollars and fifty cents a bag, at ten bags, that's, you know, twenty-five bucks on a pickup. So if they're spending twenty-five dollars a, a pickup on green yards, I mean, they're spending quite a bit of money to have it taken away.
Two dollars each.
Right, but on ten bags, that's, you know, ten, twenty-five bucks.
And how much will a toter hold comparatively to a, a bag?
So bags, I believe, are in the thirty-three gallon range. So quote me on that. Your toter, small size would be sixty-four, your big one would be like your refuse and recycling can, your ninety-six.
And then where would we put them? Just like we did when we went through this exercise with recycling was, I don't have a room in my garage. Are we going to be allowed to keep them outside?
It just can't be visible. It's the same premise, can't be visible from the front of the house, so on the side, screened or around the back.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Joe, if it's okay, Mr. Murphy? Regardless of which direction that the city chooses to go, what's the truck that we have now worth?
It's needed a lot of repairs. It's definitely at the end of its life cycle. I would say conservatively, if we get a quarter of the amount that we paid for, if it's fifty thousand, you know, I would say, hey, we did pretty good with it.
But the O and M cost will decline because we're not putting money back into the fifteen year old truck, correct?
We had about a thirteen thousand dollar repair on that. So it's one way or the other, it's got to go. We got to, you got to move on.
It's either going, it's either going to go or it's going to go. It just depends.
The garbage truck will come and pick it up.
Like I said, no decision point. If you have other individual thoughts, please shoot them my way. You know, if there's something that didn't come up tonight, great. I know for the budget, when you see it, you will probably see the large vehicle in it, just so that we have it. If something changes and we elect not to go that route and we want to get the smaller one, no problem, the budget's covered, but just, that's probably how we'll go, just to make sure we're covered.
Joe, you must have some thought about timing on this though. You're like, don't worry, but there's, you have some kind of timeline.
Operationally, we're working through a ton of stuff on it internally, trying to figure all that out, how to do it, rollout timing, when the toters go, when you let people know, who's going to sign up for it. There, there's an awful lot that goes with the rollout.
You're still sorting it out. Okay, thanks.
This was just on, on capital.
I mean, it's, I mean, I'm really curious about how many. I mean, what do we do with recycling apartment complexes?
Right, they're not our residential customers, so they, they, they basically are the top outs. They don't participate in that program. They have their own. So Stonehenge is a great example. A lot of multi-families in there. Most of Stonehenge, not all of them, but most of Stonehenge has privatized services. They could have Stevens, they could have Republic.
Great. Any other questions? Mr. Shaw, thank you very much. If that is all then for this committee meeting, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much.
Good evening, it's Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty five, this is a committee of the whole meeting. It's seven P M and our subject today is gateway signage, present for the record is myself, Mary Westfall. Mister Hanson, Mister Hanum, Mister McCann, Mister Murphy, Miss Staff. And Mister Richardson and from, uh, also Mayor Frye is joining us and from City Administration, we have got. The Law Director, Mrs., Ms. Briening, Clerk of Council, Mrs. Smith, Economic Development Director, Bill Sanford. Captain Haas from the Police Department, Service Director Joe Shaw, so, um. I'm gonna turn it over to, to Joe, but just for a quick, uh, update and refresher in our, our thought process, we did forward this. Onto the, uh, Board of Architectural Review for their consideration, they did consider it at the August thirteenth meeting. And after much discussion, they came back with a recommendation. To council to consider option one as their first choice, option three as their second choice. And option two as their third choice for the proposed standards, and that vote did pass unanimously. Um, as you know, this is really, um, ultimately a decision of council, but we do always take into consideration. The valuable thought process that the Board of Architectural Review went through, so I know that. Joe went back and put together some more detailed information following that meeting and a little bit more visual support for this discussion. And again, I don't think we need to make any decisions tonight, we're just trying to get a sense, am I correct on that?
It would be great to have a decision here if it's not tonight shortly, because we'd like to get moving on a, a project or two that has these kind of in mind, so. We, we kinda wanna get started on that, it doesn't have to be tonight, but, uh, sooner rather than later.
What was it, one, one, three, two?
One, three and two.
And that was the order.
I will take a few minutes to go through your package, which is seven sheets that are. Also want to mention that Kristen Boden, she's with, uh, just with me tonight, she is the smarts behind all of this, I just do a little bit of talking. Uh, option one, we'll talk about concept one, which I use as a medium traditional, uh, first, uh. Big theme in that is maybe a, option two, uh, modern-ish, uh. Probably you can see here, see a lot of spaces here, uh, but something a little bit different, uh, playing on the screen is a huge thing with. And then, uh, concept three was kind of a hybrid between, uh, concepts and like two, so. The mix of, uh, uh, in a little older fashion with the modern, uh, kind of a hybrid. So, uh, what we wanted to do was kinda show us some renderings, uh, with concept one being the, uh. We decided to close those, some renderings for some projects that we have around town, so. Uh, here, we should look in south, look down east, uh, you're at the intersection of Erie. Kinda getting ready to come into our new, uh, phase two footprint that'll be up and running, uh, late next year. So, uh, with the thunder clouds on each side, you have a little way, uh, almost like your colors, uh, each side. Kinda where they are with Erie. Thunder local works there, because we have less right away from the local, and it's probably gonna be some. And your private beast coming into downtown, um, it has a kind of a, our, our larger style model that could be there. On the right side, they turned around the tower, it's gonna have a lot of institutions, something just that they didn't have. Big big side, which probably, right? Which is kind of the position you go, but it can help this side, you remember. This one changes to the big side after a building look. Here, it's gonna jump around and then just a couple of different locations, moves to the center, so it can about. So, just some different flavors for how that concept comes, but, um. We, we kinda embellished on that a little bit just because that would.
Yeah, yeah, and so in bigger picture, we do have all the location plans, all of those, it's in the city control. Uh, this is a minor sign.
What, um? What's the, like, no, no normal maintenance or? Care for these and how long they usually last before you have to start replacing those signs? As far as like light bulbs, have said, you guys do all that, or is that something, has to be?
We would try ourselves depending on the type of lighting that it is, if we needed to call like a Toledo sign or something.
Nothing's the end, I'm just curious, but it.
We did find out with our weight sign, we have those around town, a, a lot of different spots, um. The metal, the metal did fade honestly fairly quick from what we put it in, we had to go and re-sheet many of those. And again, some of those I think are fading quicker than normal, so for me, uh, some of that materials and stuff would be a little less favorable, just because. It's expensive to go and repair them, I think, but, but they've given us a lot of stone and brick options, materials, so. You know, especially in that option there, you have probably high durability with, with that option, maybe in option two, maybe a little less, maybe that green starts to fade. A little bit more, depending on how that looks, but, um, you can't go wrong with our.
And is that the face of where the actual text is, is that like, uh? Plastic, uh, like an acrylic, or is that, is that, it's being lit, backlit? Yeah.
Yes, it could be, it could be, uh. The vinyl letters.
Probably we threw it four years yesterday.
I'm just curious what these other, um, post signs are.
Yeah, the, I think the two that we would probably focus on for ours would be your, your large one or your column one, the smaller ones. It's possible you could put those at smaller entrance points, but I don't think, uh, right off the bat, that's not something. But you certainly could, you would wanna have a lot of this.
I think you did, I think you did a nice job of putting in place the, uh, recommendation from, uh. The planning commission, I, I don't know where other council members are, but I do think, uh. Our community does have a very traditional brick look and these signs feel very traditional brick in the lower portion. Um, while the other ones are also very nice, the brick is kinda what we traditionally have seen in our community. I'd like some feedback from other council members to have their thoughts.
So, I agree, Mrs. Westfall, I think, uh, you know, this would be a wonderful upgrade, still maintaining the traditional look that, that I think the community desires. Um, you know, and I don't know if there's a choice between red and white brick, but if that, you know, if that's what this is, but. I would say red, just matching the buildings that we have now. Uh, and then along with Mr. Murphy's comments about durability, uh, you know, I think. The, let's say the cast concrete versus stone might be part of that cost analysis, you know, it, it would probably be higher cost for stone, but. Does it last twice as long, you know, as, as the concrete, I think that's something to consider as well.
I'm also a fan of the traditional with the brick, I mean, just going down Main Street with the brickwork that's done in the, the parallel parking spots. I think looks really good, especially where you have the, um, the stone do not like, uh, hazard lines going across, I think that turned out really well. Um, and I think carrying that red brick further out away from downtown. I think we already have that sort of style or that, um. I guess that, um, color branding identity there and then pairing it with. The green is a really nice combination, the two colors work really well together. Um, I would lean more towards the red brick than the lighter stone, I know we have some stone. Some stone walls that are low going on Main Street too, um, and I like it as an accent, but I don't know if I'd want that to be the main color. Especially since it does such a nice job of giving a, a base and a top to the, to the brick ones where it feels. A little more, I don't know, it just feels more proportioned to me, um. I did get a little bit nervous when I first saw the wraparound sign, cause at first I thought it was gonna be just a flat printed plastic. And those can look a bit cheap and, um, not as great, but with. This I, in the image that was provided, it has that three dimensional, um, s- metal sign that I think. Makes it stand out and look a lot nicer, and even the frame around it has a bit of a three dimensionality, which I, I think looks really nice. And I like the fact that it does the wrapping around, I think that has a really nice effect too, especially when people are driving or walking by. It gives it a little bit more of a dynamic, um, I don't know, something to look at a little bit differently from different angles. Um, I did have a quick question about the metal too, on the third concept, no, sorry, on the second page. Um, up on the example photos, all of the metal panels are all the core ten steel that, you know, ages and looks nicer over time and as was mentioned. This would be a powder coated, so there's no intention that this would be something in which there's purposeful aging of the metal, there would be. Got it, okay, great, I think these look really nice, I really like the look of the, the pillar sign. Um, I like it both, uh, on Main Street as well as the look at, of it on the side of at the roundabout. I, I, me and, I'm sure this is just part of my career, I like it when things are consistent, because it's less things for people to interpret on their own. And it's easy to be like, oh, I know what that is and I know what that belongs to, um, but I think it looks really nice, I would lean towards the concept one with brick.
I've just, my, I was saying my two cents, I mean, I love the red brick, uh, cause it, like you mentioned, matches everything in town, I like the pillars because I think. You said it's more consistent and honestly, it's less of a, um. I don't know if it'd be an easement issue or not, but some of those things where you gotta go all the way into somebody's yard, it's a lot easier to put something straight up and spread that full distance. And just for my own two cents, I honestly prefer the green signs on the, the brick, the red brick. Cause I, I know that vinyl after about two and a half, three years, it's gonna fade, that lime green color is gonna be so indistinguishable. On these white background signs, it's just gonna look faded and. You're gonna be replacing it, I just know that's gonna happen, so I think something older was, it would last longer, but. That's, that's only my two cents on that, um.
Would, would you have, would you be open instead of it being the like printed vinyl, like what you're saying, where would it have the problems if it was a? Metal green on top of, of like a backlit white box like that, yeah?
I mean, I think that would look, I think it'd be more durable and I think it'll last, last longer, but. And it would look, like, usually you're afraid, less cheap, you know, um, so. I mean, we love to, listen, I'm all about saving money, you know, but, but I do think that, long term, it will look sharper, but anyway, that, that's my two cents.
Yeah, I, I graduated from Miami, I like the red brick.
Mister Richardson, Mister McCann, any other comments?
I agree with everything that's been said.
I tried to keep my comments short, but I'm, I, I could go on for ages about design things.
I know, I'm sure you could, but you did great.
Try to keep it short.
Mister McCann, anything? So this was, uh, much easier than I anticipated, uh, is there a motion on that? Is there anyone who would like to put a motion on the floor to advance, uh? Is there anyone who would like to put a motion on the floor to advance, uh, concept number one?
A motion concept one.
And is there a second? So, Mr. Murphy. Ms. Dow, were you first?
Yeah, uh, but Marcus.
All right, very good. Um, so all in favor of, uh, recommending concept number one, red brick to administration to move forward with our gateway signage? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and, uh, we'll instruct administration to move forward with red brick concept number one.
Sounds good. So we will probably take, uh, we will obviously take concept one and we'll fully detail out the packets like as a reminder. What's the end goal of this was, was to have pre, pre-done, prefab, kind of everything with the, the details done in the packet. And so when these come up in specific engineering projects, like the two that you just saw there, you could literally pull them off the shelf and insert them into the project. And have it be a part of the construction.
So, um, just for our information, next steps.
Yeah, so.
What can we expect?
Yep, we will work with Edge to have a, the design co- uh, concept packet finalized. We can provide you guys with a finished copy of what that looks like. Um, and then from that point, the packet is complete and then, uh, we're obviously going to be, uh, we're already heavy into phase two of the downtown project. We can plug and play right off the shelf and say this, these two are going to go here. Kristen's group can put those in, uh, fully detail out depending on the space and how big and, you know, fit those to be the correct footprint for those. Erie Monroe is another one. They're the landscape architect on that project. They can plug and play right there with the existing right of way and what we can fit. Um, so literally, once this packet is done, we're, we're going to throw them right into construction projects and have it be a part of it.
Uh, thank you very much.
How many locations are we considering?
I think that.
Now and future?
Yeah, I think Mr. Shaw will provide some direction on that and hopefully that'll come back with your next.
We, uh, we were looking at gateways, so Erie Monroe coming from the west was one. Uh, coming from Michigan down Main Street, this would be two. Uh, coming up from the south on Main Street, so either Holland, Sylvania or Brent, we've got a couple of roundabouts that we're looking at there. Wherever those fit, you might have your third one there. And then of course, as you come in from the interchange, once that's all finished and we do the beautification project, you're probably going to look at the big one. Uh, that goes somewhere with that, but that project there, you may have even two of those as you get off of each entrance ramp, you may have one on the sides. So those would be the four locations. Those are my goals. Um, if we want to do some other smaller ones as things come up, great, but those are at least my visions, at least.
And these are not replacing the entrance signs to the city, city limit signs that are already existing?
Yeah, so if you're coming in on Brent Road and you just got this, the normal city ones, no, if there's a desire to say like, hey, let's, let's upgrade and spend a little money to put them here. We certainly can look at that, but there's no intention.
And you would use the post version?
We could, yeah.
It is a little odd to me that the, um, it says welcome on the back of it. When you go towards it, you'll be leaving. So it, and then on the, the, the horizontal monument sign, it's saying the thank you for visiting, which seems more appropriate for the back side. You know, somebody to think of.
We've had that exact same conversation because of where you're at in town, you may have already been in a mile. So it's saying welcome, does that, does that make sense or not? We, we, we need to work through some of the language.
Glad you're here.
Yeah, right, right.
About see you.
I'm with you too, like putting in the middle of that roundabout, it's like, well, it's appropriate depending which direction you're coming from, if it's in the middle of the roundabout versus the side.
My service director hat says no, because so many things get hit in an intersection.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it could be a distraction, somebody trying to figure out what's going on with. All right, well, we'll depend on you to help us figure out how we get the right word. Um, just for the record though, I'm sorry I did not introduce you, but could you share your name with me again? Thank you, Kristen, for coming. Thank you for your input and contributions. Uh, is there any further business to come before this committee of the whole meeting? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and second to adjourn this meeting at seven twenty-one. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion stands adjourned, I mean, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Sylvania City Council meeting for September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I appreciate everybody being here this evening. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Haynham?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Stow?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
All seven members of city council are in attendance, therefore quorum does exist. We'll now have the pledge of allegiance slated in the C P by Ms. Stow.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on, uh, to potential additions to the agenda, anything to add to the agenda, Mrs. Westfall?
Nothing, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The members of council. Um, Mr. Sanford?
Nothing, Ms. Mayor.
Captain Haas?
Nothing, Ms. Mayor.
Um, Mr. Shaw?
Nothing, Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Schreuer?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Brannie?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the, uh, the agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Although, uh, you know, move the second and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to the approval of the council meeting minutes for the September second, two thousand twenty-five meeting, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the city, City of Sylvania council meeting minutes from the September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five meeting as amended.
Mrs. Westfall, uh, I'd like to make a small change to it. Um, it noted, uh, that there were seven votes for the, uh, lords. Um, oh, there's no item number to it. Um, there was a miscount on an item that I pushed away from the table on. Um, there were seven yeas noted as, but there should be six.
Yep. My mistake, Mrs. Westfall, and I'll get those corrected, reposted online and-
Agenda item five A.
So, uh, very good. I move, uh, approval. Can I revise the motion? I revise the motion to, uh, move approval of the agenda, uh, the meeting minutes from the September second, two thousand twenty-five Sylvania City Council meeting with the adjustment on five A with, uh, indicating that there were six yea votes and zero, I mean, zero no votes.
A second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes for the council meeting of September second, two thousand twenty-five as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number five. This evening we have senior center presentation for the November ballot. Uh, Mr. Black, would you please come forward? Obviously, I think everybody here knows you, but nonetheless, for the record, if you can still identify yourself, that'd be wonderful.
Uh, Baron Black, twenty-three sixty-one grad, local, uh, Sylvania Township, Tuloe, Ohio. Mayor Frye, city council members, thank you for allowing me to take just a few minutes of your time, even though Doug said I could have forty-five. To speak on behalf of the Sylvania Senior Center, something that's near and dear to many of our hearts and I greatly appreciate it. I'm currently president of the Sylvania's Community Services Board. We're the governing body of the Sylvania Childcare as well as the Sylvania Senior Center. Your own council, Mo Haynham, and as well as Mary Westfall and, come on face, McCann. Mr. McCann, thank you. We're in several on our committees, so that's appreciated. We're working hard to ask you to be on our board for twenty-twenty-six, if you would please, please. But anyway, uh, let the record show, no, just, uh- But I'm here tonight because come this November, our current five-year levy expires, and we need to ask for funding for another five years. We are requesting a new levy of point five rather than renewal of our point four-two levy. We would have asked for a, uh, was it replacement?
Right.
But to be very honest with you, even that would have fallen short. We're working our-
And we can't do it anymore.
And we can't do it anymore, but even with it, we would have fallen short. So, uh, we are asking for a point five, no. Uh, let's begin with a very quick overview of how we got here. The Sylvania Senior Center began in nineteen seventy-four via the Action Interest League, also known as SAEL. Over time, that was started as a grassroots effort and has grown into a vital part of the Sylvania community. In nineteen seventy-six, Sylvania Community Services recreated, was created as a partnership between the township, the city, and schools. And something was at the time very unique to our region. By nineteen seventy-eight, SAEL became part of SCS. And in two thousand two, thanks to the city as well as the township, we moved into our current location on Sylvania. Uh, since two thousand, the residents of Sylvania have showed consistent support for the Senior Center through the passage of local levies. Most recently in twenty-twenty, we renewed our point four-two levy, and we are incredibly proud of the fact that the community places their trust in us. And we do not take it lightly at all. But like every, but like every other five years, the time has come again, and we are asking for an endorsement this time of a new levy as we can continue the work that so many rely on. We have earned trust through financial stewardship. We have seen a dis- decrease in area office on aging funding. We continue to work hard to maintain a strong financial standing through diverse revenue sourcing such as seeking out of grants and donations and take care of our facility with a strict maintenance schedule. Over the years, we've had to make tough staff decisions. We've gone from eleven full-time employees to five. But we continue to serve the mo- the ones that are most needed, our seniors, and we continue to grow. Despite our efficiencies, it's, it's nearly continuous growing, thanks to that. Federal funding cuts from the area office on aging may reduce our support by nearly twenty-nine thousand dollars this fall, funding we've counted on for more than fifteen years. In just the first three quarters of twenty-twenty-five, five hundred and twenty-three new participants have joined us at the center. That exceeds four hundred and seventy-eight of the participants of all of last year, so we're already way over that. Our anticipate, we're anticipating close to seven hundred this year. In twenty-twenty-three, we updated our mission and vision to reflect the needs of today's fifty-five-plus population. And we're committed to continuing that work until twenty-twenty-five and beyond. We recently hosted a two-week session of what we called fifty-five after five. It was well-attended. It showed us that there is a need in Sylvania that an after-hour venue for those that cannot attend during normal working hours is in need. To give an example for the need for other services, on Saturday, September sixth, we opened, we had an open house at the Senior Center. Fire department was involved, city police department was volunteered and was involved. That was very well-attended. We had over two hundred visitors. Since September sixth, we have had twenty-four people from the, of that two hundred already signed up to be participants with us. So we're extremely excited by that, and we continue to do more with less. Meanwhile, inflation and aging infrastructure make it difficult to keep pace with the twenty-fifteen era budgets. We're requesting a new levy, not as a replacement, but because legally we are no longer to pursue that replacement, but if we could, the cost would fall short of our needs. A new levy off allows us to keep moving forward in a sustainable way. Currently, our four-point, our point four-two levy costs eleven dollars and sixty cents per one hundred thousand home value. A point-five levy request would be eighteen dollars per one hundred thousand dollar home value. At the heart of the area, the people we are so proudly serve, with the staff we continue to go above and beyond the call of duty for us. Our staff regularly hear the cry in our building, "This place is a lifesaver. It's my home away from home," and participant Snyder said recently, "I don't live here, but I sure do come alive here." To, to wrap up, we're asking for your support tonight, not just for the center, but for the community members who depend on it. We respectfully request your endorsement for issue six. This is the first step in continuing decades-long legacies of support and services for us. The need is here now more than ever, and with your help and the taxpayers of Sylvania area, we continue to provide help to our seniors. Thank you again for your time, your partnership, and all that you do for Sylvania. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have one.
So, Mr. Black, could you go through those numbers again for me again, please?
Uh, values?
Uh, yeah, the, for a hundred thousand dollars, it was eleven and change.
Eleven dollars and sixty cents for point five, based on the new reflection of the evaluations of properties, it'll be eighteen dollars even.
Okay, so eleven sixty to eighteen.
Yeah, remember, the point four-two is based on an old-
Eleven sixty is not a fair per-
No, no, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, because that's the old evaluations.
Could, we couldn't do the replacement.
Understood.
They did away with replacements under-
Sentimental letters.
Understood.
But the eighteen dollars is a reflection of the new established rates for homes.
And obviously, the city of Sylvania, as you mentioned early in your com- comments, has a long track record of being supportive of the Senior Center.
And I meant to thank you too for what you said in advantage a couple, three weeks ago. It was very much appreciated. No, it means a lot. It really does.
I'm proud. Happy to do it. Um, any questions or comments by members of council?
Mr. Black, I feel like in the very beginning, you said a few things that I'm not sure I, I grasp completely. Um, did you indicate that this will not actually help you close the gap as much as you need it closed?
This will close again. I'm sorry, this will. If we had done a replacement, it would not have.
Got it. Perfect. That's what I-
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, I, it was my misunderstanding. I just wanted to clarify.
Five-year-old glasses.
Other questions or comments from members?
Question?
Ms. Stow?
Uh, with the levy, you mentioned having more after-hour programming. Would there be any new full-time staff coming on?
Yes, that would be part of the, the extra income that it would bring, approximately forty percent more of, of cash. So with that, we want to get, for example, for the Senior Center alone, we definitely need a social worker. We need a professional in there. We have a nurse that comes in a couple, three. That's wonderful. But seniors need people to talk to. Need a professional to talk to. You don't have to talk to me. And, and that's what that could bring to the table for us. But the other thing is, I, we can't have our current staff working from, you know, five o'clock till nine-thirty in the evening. So for that, we would need additional staff, and that is one of our goals, is to have fifty-five after five. So, yeah.
Questions?
Uh, Mr. Black, funding cuts, you mentioned, I think, twenty-nine thousand?
Yeah, area office on aging, yeah.
That's all from area office on aging?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
And to be very frank with you, as recently as today, we're kind of renegotiating, see if they can't sharpen their pencil to help us a little bit more too.
Okay.
Because obviously, they receive a lot of money from the Sylvania taxpayers through their budgets, so we're hoping that they can maybe have a change of heart and try to find some money for us.
So Baron, I'm gonna help you a little bit here.
Please.
Baron wants two things from us. He wants us individually to endorse this.
Love that.
Let, send our individual names to the endorsed ballot. If you're willing to do that, that would be great. He would also like to have city council endorse the levy. I mean, this is, and I know we don't endorse a lot of levies, but we are one of the founding partners of this organization. I think it would be appropriate. I know we have some protocols for doing that and, uh, need some financials and we're, we have enough time to do that.
Correct, yes.
And, uh-
There's a policy I can, I can get to, Mr. Black.
Yeah, I mean, whatever hoops we need to jump through.
Yeah, I think the only thing we'll need, um, and I know, um, Claire used to, we're used to work with her on getting the information, so I think we just need updated financials. I'm sure we have the ones from five years ago.
No, I don't think we do.
No, okay.
He'll get those.
Yeah, yeah. He's just got done with an audit, so we're good.
I'll email you a copy of our policy, so you've got it.
I'd appreciate that, yeah, very much.
So once she gets that, then we can get an item on the agenda to formally endorse it as the city.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
But, uh, as I told Baron earlier today, he can use my name, and if, whenever you feel comfortable, call Baron. Send your name. Be appreciated. I would give him your phone number.
Please. Yeah, four-one-nine, three-four-zero, nine-seven-three-one's myself. Text me, call me.
Can you do it one more time, please?
Yeah, four-one-nine, three-four-zero, nine-seven-three-one. And Lindsay, thank you for letting us borrow your dad. He's been kind enough to co-chair.
Oh, that's great.
Kim Conklin from the school.
You know, I'm just hoping sometime I can come in and use that wood shop you guys have. I have projects I want to work on. You have such a great wood shop.
It's pretty nice, yeah. It is nice.
So, so, Mr. Haynham, one of the things that, uh, Ms. Brannie mentioned is that it is possible for city council, if they're willing, to authorize this um, contingent upon review of the financial information, so to move this process along. Uh, so, so we could prepare to get it on for the next council meeting, which would be the first meeting in October. Otherwise, it's going to be the second meeting in October, which, no disrespect to the city, by the time you get to the second meeting in October, I'm not sure how much of an impact it's really going to have on the voters in the, you know, three weeks hence.
Well, um, and there's preparation.
Yeah, we have to.
So that would be good. Anything we could do to expedite that?
I'd entertain a motion to, to do that.
Still moved.
Second.
A motion in a second to, um, authorize the, the, uh, administration to, um, create a, a resolution, I guess it would be, for an endorsement of the Sylvania Senior, Senior Centers levy, uh, based upon a contingency of, uh, of the receipt of the appropriate documents um, that will be forthcoming for the October-
Sixth.
Sixth meeting.
Wonderful.
She's, she's helping me out here.
Thank you so much.
Uh, we, we have a motion in a second for that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Black.
Name my day. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Being on to agenda item number six, we have a report from the Parks and Forestry Committee meeting held, uh, this evening. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this evening at six-thirty, we had a meeting in the Parks and Forestry Committee. Uh, the topic of that was green yard waste, um, a new program entertaining, uh, the possibility of a new truck to help streamline that process. Attended, uh, that meeting were the members of that committee, myself, Sean Murphy, Doug Haynham, Brian McCann, Lindsay Stow. Others present were Mark Frye, Mary Westfall, Leslie Brining, Laura Smith, Joe Shaw, Bill Sanford, Patrick Richardson. Uh, we did not have anybody in attendance out in the, uh, the gallery here. Um, one of the things that were mentioned was that, uh, last year, uh, we did forego, they purchased somebody garbage truck to investigate, um, more efficient ways to handle that and other opportunities that we could maybe look at, uh, to streamline that process. The new truck we discussed would be a f- front loader. We decided to go with a one-man operated truck. Currently, Pearlsburg does have a similar system that they are utilizing. Mr. Haynham did ask for some clarification on some numbers, which were sixty, there's six thousand twenty-eight garbage stops in town. Eighteen hundred and seventeen people, uh, use the Green Yard Waste Program. That was a study over seven weeks. Uh, Ms. Stow did share her appreciation for the work that, uh, Mr. Shaw did in preparing that information. Mr. Haynham again asked to see if we could consider what it would look like to review the numbers to include green yard waste as part of our normal, uh, services that we offer as a city with your, uh, recycling and garbage pickup. Um, with that, we wrapped up the meeting. Uh, we had a motion by Ms. Stow, a second by Mr. McCann, and we did adjourn the meeting at six fifty-eight P M.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any questions or comments about Mr. Murphy's report? Thank you very much. Hearing, hearing none, moving on to the report from the committee of the whole held this evening as well. This is Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this evening, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the committee of the whole meeting began at seven P M focusing on gateway signage standards. All council members were present, myself, Mary Westfall, Marcus Hanson, Doug Haynham, Brian McCann, Sean Murphy, Lindsay Stow, Patrick Richardson. Also joining us was Mayor Frye, Law Director, Mrs. Brining, Clerk of Courts, Mrs. Smith, as well as Economic Development, Bill Sanford, Captain Haas, Service Director, Mr. Shaw, and a representative from Edge, uh, Kristen Bowden. Um, so we started out the meeting sharing the feedback that we had received from the, uh, Board of Architectural Review. At their August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting, they reviewed the gateway signage standards, and they came back and made a recommendation to council that we consider option one as their first choice, option three as their second choice, and option two as their third choice. So, uh, these were all documents that he, that city council members had received earlier, but Mr. Shaw did do an update on the, um, the plans for our review tonight, and we turned it over to Mr. Shaw, and he then spoke to the three plans, and the city council members had a discussion um, leaning toward option or concept one. Mr. Shaw did a, a, a much larger, uh, development of the campaign and the concept of that concept one because that was the one that was recommended by the Board of Architectural Review. Um, the council really talked about brick versus stone and talked a little bit about some of the colors and, uh, what would be most affordable, what we should do with the cap base, where they would be focused on, what would the care and the lifespan be, and after much discussion, um, there was a motion put on the floor that, uh, we recommend to administration that concept one be advanced, and that concept focuses on the traditional red brick for the gateway signage. And that motion was put on the table by Mr. Uh, Mr. Murphy, I said. Is that right?
That is correct.
Mr. Murphy, and then seconded by Mr. Stow, by Ms. Stow, rather. Um, then there was some minimal other discussion about next steps in the meeting. Uh, then motion to adjourn the meeting was put on the table by Mr. Hanson, seconded by Ms. Stow. That meet, that passed, and the meeting adjourned at seven twenty-one.
Thank you, Mrs. Westfall. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments from members of council? Hearing none, moving on to agenda item number eight. We have a resolution number sixteen, two thousand twenty-five, consideration regarding budget commission and necessary levies. Mr. Schreuer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is our annual resolution, uh, that authorizes, that we are authorizing the county to, um, collect property taxes for us in calendar year two thousand twenty-six. Um, it's gone up between twenties, what we currently collect versus what we're going to collect next year, whether it's thirty-five percent or about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra that we're going to collect. We had collected, uh, this current year, we're collecting around two-point four million, and we're going to collect about just over three-point-two million in two thousand twenty-six.
Questions for Mr. Schreuer? Hearing none, we have resolution sixteen, two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Mrs. Westfall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce resolution number sixteen dash two thousand twenty-five, and I'll read by title. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. I move, uh, passage of resolution number sixteen dash two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve resolution sixteen, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to ordinance, our, uh, general item number eight, ordinance number one oh-three, two thousand twenty-five, the then announced cer- certifications. Mr. Schreuer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are the, uh, then-announced certifications of over three thousand dollars, um, for the month of August. And the administration requests the approval.
Any questions for Mr. Schreuer regarding ordinance one oh-three, two thousand twenty-five? Hearing none, we have ordinance one oh-three, two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Ms. Stow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number one oh-three dash twenty twenty-five and read by title only. An ordinance to authorize and ratify the execution of then-announced certificates by the finance director and the payment of amounts due for various purchase orders. I move for passage of ordinance number one oh-three dash twenty twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number one oh-three, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. An ordinance number one oh-three, two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number ten, we have proposed ordinance one oh-four, two thousand twenty-five. Ms. Brannie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've talked a lot about this position, and I appreciate your support, um, in applying for the grant. We were successful in receiving thirty thousand dollars in funding from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, Violence Against Women Act Fund. Um, so with that, I have, uh, our contract with Lucas County expires September thirtieth, so, um, we would need to move forward and create this position effective October first in the prosecutor's office. That's what this ordinance does and establishes the salary for the position at sixty-five thousand dollars. That is a, she currently makes sixty thousand dollars in Lucas County, but we will be, she will be assisting some, with some secretarial duties in the prosecutor's office as well, and she will not, she understands she will not get a raise in January, so this will be for, until January first, twenty twenty-seven. She would next be eligible for a raise.
Questions from Ms. Brannie?
Mr. Murphy, you mentioned thirty thousand. Was that after the?
No, that was, with thirty thousand was the total. We did spend ten thousand on the video, so then that is twenty.
Twenty, okay.
We originally received notification that we received forty thousand dollars.
That's why I thought I referred to it.
Yeah, that's why I thought you were asking the question, but, um, we received, I believe that was like on September fifth, I think, that we got that letter. And then last week, we were notified that they unilaterally cut the funding across the board due to a reduction in funding from the federal government, so.
Do they give any, uh, mindset of what future grants will look like or?
They just really don't know at this point. It's on an annual basis, so I don't ant- I anticipate using the same video next year, so we won't have that cost. Yeah, yeah.
Other questions from Ms. Brannie?
Is there, um, is there any, any possibility to the other municipalities that the court serves?
Get them to chip in?
Yeah, for the, I mean, I know that there's state laws around how the courts funded, is this outside of that? Because?
It is not. What we do, um, for the townships, Holland is based, their contribution is based on the percentage of caseload relative to the prosecutor's office budget. This is obviously a new cost for the budget, so Holland will be chipping in. But the townships, until we get a legislative fix, we are on the hook for everything related to the prosecutor's office funding. Sorry. I, I know I hate it too. It's not, it's not fair, but.
I'm waiting, Mr. Black.
I know, I know. I teed it right up for you.
To, to be continued.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions from Ms. Brannie regarding ordinance one oh-four? Hearing none, we have ordinance one oh-four, two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Mr. McCann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number one oh-four dash twenty twenty-five revising the administration, administrative, departmental, and divisional organization of the city and codified ordinance thereof by amending Sylvania codified ordinance section one thirty-one dot oh-one. Department of Law Director and Division of Prosecution amending Sylvania codified ordinance section one thirty-nine dot oh-three E three to set the salary of the victim advocate at sixty five thousand annually, commencing October one, twenty twenty five. I would like to move passage of ordinance number one oh four dash twenty twenty five as an emergency measure.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one oh four, two thousand twenty five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, and ordinance one oh four, two thousand twenty five is approved as an emergency measure. Thank you very much. I appreciate your support in that regard. Um moving on to agenda item number eleven. We have proposed ordinance one oh five, two thousand twenty five for consideration. Uh Ms. Brining.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is um ordered legislation from the last council meeting and discussion of the time that council meetings start. Um there was a motion and a second to order legislation changing the start time from um seven thirty to six thirty effective September, or I'm sorry, January first, twenty twenty six. Um so.
Questions from Ms. Brining?
Ms. Brining?
Yes.
Just the way this is written, I I believe we can, if we found that this didn't work for whatever reason, we can change.
Anytime.
Midyear.
Correct. That's exactly right. Yep.
Other questions?
I was just to clarify, it's already being printed on the calendar at six thirty, right? For next year. I mean, that's the end of the world, but no.
No.
No, it's not. Okay. Just what date the council?
We haven't gone to print yet.
We haven't gone to print. We're waiting out for your phone.
No, no, you mentioned we can change it anytime. I'm just saying hypothetically, the calendar wouldn't be right, but.
Yeah.
Obviously, the council has a prerogative, but presumably you would not change it.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna fight with the calendar. Okay.
Understood. Any other questions? We get so many people here. Absolutely. But you never know, Mr. Hanam.
I know.
Uh ordinance one oh five, two thousand twenty five for consideration. This is Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number one oh five dash two thousand twenty five, and I'll read by title only. Revising the administrative code of the city and the codified ordinance is thereof by amending Sylvania Codified Ordinance Chapter one eleven, council, by amending section one eleven point zero one, council rules. I move final passage of ordinance number one oh five dash two thousand twenty five as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one oh five, two thousand twenty five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Hanam?
Yes.
Mr. McCann?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Ms. Stowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Final vote? Ms. Smith is?
Final vote is uh six yeas, one nay.
There at six yeas, one nay, the the ordinance carries and it passes as an emergency measure for ordinance one oh five, two thousand twenty five. Thank you very much. Moving on to um agenda item number twelve, we have if uh the referral to the Planning Commission of ordinance one oh six, two thousand twenty five regarding accessory buildings and uses. Mr. Hanam.
Where did this come from?
We had a request from a resident um to construct a carport. Um he lives on Balfour. There's uh, we've had other requests over in the past couple of years, Mr. Burn said. Um this one was just uh unique in that there's already there was an existing shed that we were not aware of, so this is two accessory structures. So we wanted to provide some guidelines and some um what they have to look like for if people want to have a carport. Um Mr. Shaw and I discussed it. We don't, it's only for R two. It's not permitted anywhere out in any other zoning classification, but um it just didn't seem over in in the R two classified zones, it seemed to meet the characteristics, so long as they also um comply with.
The way this is listed, if a neighbor doesn't want a core carport in his neighborhood, he has no place to go, does he? If we did, if we change this as a, to make a carport.
A permissible accessory structure?
A P D.
Oh, a P D.
Requiring council approval.
Mm-hmm.
That would give neighbors an opportunity to public, to appear at a public hearing, register their objections.
Sure.
And council could, would be, would make a decision. Whereas um not that, not that our administration people aren't fabulous in what they do. But I'm not sure we wanna put this on the zoning administrator or the director of public service. I mean, not that they wouldn't make good decisions, it's just that there's no public input to that decision the way this is structured. So I would pass that comment on to the planning.
Mm-hmm, perfect.
But I would much rather see this as and it, it's one person. I mean, this is not gonna dominate our agenda.
So, and he's been very cooperative to work with. He.
I'm sure he's a great guy.
He is.
I I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be difficult for him either. I'm just thinking there will be situations um where a neighbor might object to the.
And construction, yep, absolutely. Mr. Hanam, I did not think about this until you you stepped in. Um I think that some of the HOAs may have policies that prohibit them.
Those trump our zoning code. Yes, absolutely. Yep, yep. But I think in R two, we, when, I don't, in the areas I can think of offhand that are, don't, I'm sorry. I don't think there are HOAs.
HOAs, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'd be surprised.
Right. So Ms. Brining, what's the, walk everybody through, refresh my memory, the the P D and how that mechanism flows as far as timing?
Um it's what I would, I will talk to Mr. Gross and have him, do you object to having the process run concurrently? Because it's kind of like when we've created specially used classifications and allow the applicant to kind of apply for, um for instance, a wholesale bakery before the.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
I know. I just don't want a construction season to go by because some guy decided he wanted to ask for a carport. Oh, we said a public hearing and nobody shows up for.
Right, and then we, he would, then he would just be getting started in the process. But if you don't have an objection, I'll have.
Well, I, yeah, I, I mean, I have a strong preference for not doing it this way, but doing it the other way. Um and I think in the long term, I think we serve our neighbors better doing the, doing a uh a P D. The other advantage of the P D is we can specify what the carport's gonna look like, what it's gonna be constructed out of and all that good, all that good stuff. Um so I don't know how we go about doing that, but.
Yeah, I will, I can reach out to him and have him, as long as you don't have an issue with it, we'll um.
I don't have an issue with it.
Okay, then we can have him apply for it as a P D.
Yeah.
Run the processes kind of at the same time.
Great. That'd be great.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. We still need her.
With that being said, Mr. Hanam, were you still willing to refer one oh six to the planning commission? Or are there other questions from council members?
Well, I mean.
Or do you wanna wait until we sort?
No, let's refer it.
Okay.
Okay, let's keep the process moving.
Yep.
Um but I just don't like it. And you can tell, you can tell the planning commission that.
I see.
And what? I move, excuse me, I move, we refer ordinance number one oh six dash twenty twenty five to the planning commission for their review and recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to refer, refer ordinance one oh six, two thousand twenty five to the city's municipal planning commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much, and ordinance one oh six is referred to the planning commission. Moving on to agenda item thirteen. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In front of you is our invasive species control agreement um that the Nature Conservancy had reached out to us for from McNelly Park. Um you don't know where that is, don't be ashamed. Uh there's many in this town that don't. Way at the north end of Balfour, there's eight lots uh in Sylvan Side subdivision that were owned by a lady named Fay McNelly back in the mid, mid seventies. And uh she wanted uh these eight lots kind of preserved for oak openings. There's a really good collection of of oak trees that are in the area, uh wanted them preserved, uh suggested selling them to the City of Sylvania to do that and and keep the area undeveloped, uh which in nineteen seventy four, the city decided to do. So we've had it for uh a fifty plus years. Um and the Nature Conservancy had reached out to us. They have um some discretionary grants from the U uh U S Fish and Wildlife uh Service. Um they're targeting thirteen hundred acres of invasive species control with the grants that they have through that, of which a very small percentage uh is targeting new areas uh in the oak openings regions, of which we are three acres of thirteen hundred acres, so a very, very small percentage of that, but nonetheless, uh still reached out to us um at zero cost. The agreement is zero cost. They wanna use the grant funds and apply it to this particular area. Um we own the property, uh we should have an agreement in place just that outlines what those expectations are uh that are in there. So really, our only obligation is just to maintain it in the exact same uh space that it is. Uh the Nature Conservancy, once they do invasive species control work, will use it for different educational purposes, different reports, different studies uh on some methods and some different things that they're doing with their grant, so. Um they reached out to us, sounds like a good fit. They love what happened in Huron Park. It's a great success story. Uh continue kind of that work here uh in McNelly Park. So be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Shaw regarding this item? Now we have ordinance one oh seven, two thousand twenty five for consideration. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to choose ordinance one oh seven, twenty twenty five to authorize Mayor Director Finance to enter into a property management agreement with the Nature Conservancy to provide invasive species treatments in McNelly Park. I move for this to be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Motion and a second to approve ordinance one oh seven, two thousand twenty five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, ordinance one oh seven, two thousand twenty five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number fourteen, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh a couple items coming up here on our downtown transportation improvements project. For the last at least two meetings in a row, you've had some action items in front of you regarding aerial utility berry effort. Um this is the last of the four utility companies that has provided us with what they've called a subordination agreement. And so what that means is uh we have asked Toledo Edison to move their facilities from overhead to underground. They don't wanna do that again, regardless if it's in our public right of way or not. Um so what they're asking is with this effort that we're going to do, any additional relocations, the city comes back and says this needs to happen. We are gonna bear the cost of that, just like we're doing now. Uh you know, kind of makes sense, but it's kind of a formal way to acknowledge that, so. Um so in front of you is that agreement. There's no cost in this one. I will be coming back to you with one final piece of legislation before we actually can move forward with the utility berry piece project, and that's to authorize the amount for Toledo Edison to actually relocate their facilities. Uh our office is working diligently with them to try to uh come to uh an amount with that. Uh it's been difficult, but um it's the last piece to do before we can actually move forward and advertise the berry piece portion of the project and get this moving, but tonight is the subordination agreement. Uh I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Stowe.
What would be a scenario that you could envision where we might have to relocate one of these lines?
I don't, I don't know that I can. Um.
We're trying to widen the street.
What's up?
We decide to widen the street?
Yeah, but even then, I don't think I would, I don't even think I'd ask him to move. We have, we have brand new water in there. Uh sanitary sewer's been lined and it's good. We've got all new services lined way past my lifetime. Even if you did widen it, maybe, or you sell Main Street, I I don't know, some really, really far crazy things to do. I.
Sounds pretty extreme.
Hope me and the next four service directors don't have to do this thing.
And I'm assuming, based on everything we're doing, we're not planning on widening it.
We're not. We're selling it for the record.
We're selling it, yes, for the record. Mr. Murphy, thank you.
And so they can pay for the uh moving the parlance.
Any other questions for Mr. Shaw regarding this? Hearing none, we have ordinance one oh eight, two thousand twenty five for consideration. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number one oh eight, twenty twenty five. I'll read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to execute and deliver to the Toledo Edison Company a subordination agreement and easement for utility purposes. I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one oh eight, two thousand twenty five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, and ordinance one oh eight, two thousand twenty five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item uh fourteen C.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um next few items are uh necessary Toledo Edison easements that the city is going to grant them to help us accomplish the utility berry piece. Um I've got three addresses, addresses listed in your, in your letter there uh to give you some ideas on where these belong. Fifty seven twenty seven Main Street, that's our uh historical museum. Uh the front piece of that, the fifty seven thirty four Lane Drive. Uh we don't have anything that's rec recorded as Lane Drive, except the auditor's office uses where the train barn is for the historical museum is that address, so that's why it's listed there. So you've got two historical addresses uh that'll have easements with them. And then sixty five oh one Monroe Street is out of that footprint. It's actually Joe's Tire. Um and so I'm gonna walk through a couple of those with, with what we're doing on. So major backbone of the electrical infrastructure will be mostly in the public right of way. But because we own uh a significant amount of land on the west side, we're gonna utilize um discreet locations within the historical village to continue to locate facilities and trans closures and sectionalizers above grade. Um they're kind of uglier pieces of equipment, but we've got them secured in locations and we'll have some screening around them so that you probably wouldn't notice that they're there anyways. You just would look like, hey, that's a little bit of electrical equipment. So that's in the historical village piece of it. Joe's Tire is interesting because it allows us to eliminate probably four or five poles that they were going to place on maple wood. So the idea was to reduce the number of poles on Main Street, but their original design had adding about four poles on maple wood. Not a great thing. That would have looked really ugly. So uh the deputy director, Eric Barnes, has worked really close with them to bring power from the back, so to speak. So through Joe's Tires, our big transmission lines that go out the back, we can actually snag power, power from the back, come up the side, right adjacent to the George Acopolis's place, but still on Joe's tires. And then we're gonna uh cross the intersection and head up Summit Street and backfeed a lot of the places on Main Street to accomplish it, so. Uh really creative way to, to do this. Uh there's more power that's needed to do that, and that's why uh we're bringing it from the, the Joe's Tire site, so to speak, to help us reduce those poles. So uh that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the three easements.
Questions for Mr. Shaw? Hearing none, we have ordinance one oh nine, two thousand twenty five for consideration. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number one oh nine, two thousand twenty five. I'll read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to execute and deliver to the Toledo Edison Company an easement agreement for utility purposes. I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one oh nine, two thousand twenty five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, and ordinance one oh nine, two thousand twenty five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to ordinance one ten. Um, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number one ten, two thousand twenty five. I'll read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to execute and deliver to the Toledo Edison Company an easement agreement for utility purposes. I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one ten, two thousand twenty five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Richardson, with your permission, throw this one to Mr. Hanson, since he's the utilities chair. Um so, Mr. Hanson, the ordinance one eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number one eleven dash twenty twenty five. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to execute and deliver to the Toledo Edison Company easement agreement for utility purposes. I move for passage of ordinance number one eleven dash twenty twenty five as an emergency measure.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one eleven, two thousand twenty five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, and ordinance one eleven, two thousand twenty five is approved as an emergency. Motion carried, and ordinance one eleven two thousand twenty five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number fifteen. Mister Shaw.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. If you recall back in March of this year, uh, I stood in front of you and requested authorization to submit a grant application. Uh, for highway safety improvement funds. Uh, and this was at two intersections, uh, for roundabout consideration, uh, one was Brent Maine and Holland Slovenia. And the second was Haroun and Holland Slovenia. Uh, those applications were reviewed and scored, uh, and our, uh, Brent Maine and Holland Slovenia Roundabout was selected for safety funding. The other one was not, uh, just so that you know, we applied for C Mac funding for the other one and successfully got that one, so we now have both of those projects. Successfully funded, but for this one here, uh, we are ready to start the design services. Safety projects, when you get them, they get started very quickly and right away, so, uh, we've moved, uh, pretty quickly to get our letter of interest. Process together with ODOT, we've already had our field review on the project to, uh, fully establish scope for it. Uh, but the next step for us is to get a engineering consultant on board to help us with the project. Uh, so we would do the letter of interest process, a- and again, what we're looking for is interested consultants that wanna design the project and submit. Their qualifications, we select, uh, the most qualified consultant, not considering fee, and then with that. Uh, selected consultant, we enter scope and fee negotiations and, and, and hope of, uh, finding resolution on what that project would cost. Or, or des- to design would cost, so, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mister Shaw. Hearing none, I wanna congratulate Mister Shaw and Mister Barnes on. Working diligently to try to secure this funding for the city, we appreciate that ongoing effort, and we've got, uh.
Am I reading this right, this is a three million dollar project, it's gonna cost us six hundred thousand dollars. Nice job.
These are the best pots to, to, if you can get safety funding, it's ninety ten in all phases, uh, they're, they're tremendous. Uh, you gotta work hard and you compete across the state for them, but we're very fortunate to have been considered.
We have a letter requesting authorization for letters of, uh, interest and solicitation, Mister Richardson.
I'll make a motion to authorize administration to begin the letter of interest solicitation process for the Brent Maine Holland Slovenia Roundabout Project.
We have a motion in a second to authorize the administration to begin the letter of interest solicitation for the di- design engineering services for the Roundabout Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carried, thank you very much, and we'll get moving on that project. On to agenda item sixteen, we have, uh. Some, uh, planning commission recommendations for approval in the setting of public hearings, or sixteen and seventeen, Mister Hanam.
Yes, Mister Mayor, I move, uh, we set public hearing for October twentieth. Twenty twenty five. Seven o'clock. On S U P number three dash twenty twenty five.
Is there a second? A motion in a second to set the public clear hearing for S U P three two thousand twenty five. At seven PM, correct Mister Hanam? On October twentieth, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carried, thank you very much, moving on to agenda item seventeen, we have, uh, we have. Zoning amendment request C A one two thousand twenty five, uh, for potential public hearing, Mister Hanam.
Yes, Mister. Set public hearing on, uh, zoning ordinance amendment C A one dash. Uh, ten twenty five for October twentieth twenty twenty five at seven.
At what time, I'm sorry?
Seven PM, seven PM.
We have a motion in a second to set the, uh, the, uh, Z A one twenty twenty five. Uh, 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 seven PM, at, uh, on October twentieth two thousand twenty five hearing council chambers, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried, thank you very much, moving on to, uh, agenda item number eighteen, we have planning commission recommendation. And referral regarding lot splits, Ms. Browning.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, this is just, um, also just set a public hearing, this is for the, um, the change to the code that would, um. Fix the lot split thing that we have, where you have to have an irregular lot, it would be required, this allows them to just be two rectangles. Um, the plan commission approved that recommendation, so we just need to have a public hearing and, um. I would recommend October twentieth as well, I don't think there's. I know that's three in one day, but.
We're gonna do three in one day at seven o'clock. I move, Mister Mayor. Move that we, uh, set a public hearing for, uh, proposed ordinance number ninety one dash twenty twenty five. Uh, amending part eleven of the planning and zoning code of the codified ordinances of Slovenia nineteen seventy nine. As amended by amending chapter eleven seventy nine. Principles of, uh, uh, acceptability section eleven seventy nine point oh five lots, and that we set that public hearing. For seven AM on October twenty. Seven PM.
Uh, we have a motion in a second to set the, a, uh, public hearing for the planning commission's recommendation on proposed ordinance ninety one. Twenty twenty five at seven PM on October twentieth two thousand twenty five hearing council chambers. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carried, thank you very much, Mister Mayor, the chair's prerogative here.
Mister Mayor, I'm sorry, I, I just have a quick question on this one, was there a, just a specific property that prompted this, or?
Do you, I don't remember offhand, offhand where it is, little. Those lots are really deep, so they don't, um, follow our depth to width ratio requirement, so that's why we. Doesn't make sense to create old shape plots.
I agree, I just didn't know if it was something that was long time coming. Thank you.
So, um, with, uh, with chair's prerogative, one thing I wanted to mention, well, first of all, do we have any committee reports, other committee reports to come before the. Council this evening? Any committee referrals? Hearing none, before we, uh, consider executive session, I just wanted to go in and mention this is going into our. Packet, uh, or, or bills for.
Uh, thank you, Mister Shaw. Yes, so that's a, a piece that we worked on together, uh, with Slovenia Township. City of Malmo, we actually did a, a great piece, uh, that had something like this before. Mayor Fry had seen it, uh, really liked the idea, I lo- I loved it as well. Um, so we partnered, uh, with Slovenia Township to do the, the graphics on ours, uh, we did all of the work in-house. Partnered with Slovenia Township, they, they liked the idea too, we deal with more sidewalk, um, issues and stuff covering sidewalk issues than probably they do. Um, but I was just talking with the zoning administrator this morning, uh, and he says, uh, this summer has been really problematic with the issues that are kind of depicted. In your, um, in your two photos there, so, um, they will have it in front of their commissioners as an informational piece, um, tomorrow night. And then our home is to put this in our utility bills for September with the QR code that you can go to and check out. It'll also be on our website, Slovenia Township is gonna do the same through their alert messaging systems, and then, uh, we'll do an educational piece here at the end of September. Reminding residents of these kind of things that you don't think about, uh, when, when you have, uh, families and other things using. Our public sidewalks, but, uh, the goal is, uh, Mayor Fry had asked for this to be a message that comes out each year annually in the spring as, as people become more active. Uh, a good reminder to everybody to keep, keep those sidewalks clear for everybody, so.
Do we have enforcement recourse for? Individuals blocking sidewalks?
Hello, Ms. Browning, do we have enforcement ability for this?
Yeah, yeah, we do, um, I don't know that our police department gets a lot of calls, or I don't know if Tim gets calls. Obviously, if Tim gets them, he responds, um, and asks them to move.
It's mostly him, I mean, if he gets a complaint or, or Tim sees it, he'll go and knock on the door and say, hey, you know, can we keep this open?
And obviously, the vast majority of time, we're hoping this doesn't create the issue where we're gonna have to have those conversations anymore, in some cases, they might.
The other thing, remember, you have to be under twelve to ride a bike on a sidewalk. That picture shows a kid. And I thought we had an ordinance about bikes on sidewalks, and we do.
You can't ride a bike if you're more than twelve years old. You're not supposed to. Not that I've ever seen anybody over the age of.
That's enforceable, but subject to the same penalty. Blocking the sidewalk.
Yep, absolutely. Any other questions? Hearing none, we've got a executive session for consideration, um, in regards to potential ac- acquisition of property. And, uh, employment matters and, and other thing, what are, what are the other two? Personnel matters.
And the purchase and acquisition of real estate.
Person, purchase and acqui- potential purchase and acquisition of real estate. Will the clerk? To go into committee of the whole executive session, do I have a motion? Second, uh, we have a motion in a second to go into executive session for consideration of these items, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mister Hanson? Mister Hanam? Mister McCann? Mister Murphy? Mister Richardson? Miss Phil?
Yes.
This is Westfall.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, motion carries, we are in executive session, ladies, you probably wanna come up if you need signatures, otherwise. We've got something we need to chat about.